...presentation for council.
Okay, that would be good to have right now? Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed members of the council. I am Mike Haven here on behalf of the Menlo Atherton Little League. It's good to be standing before you again. Thank you for putting this important matter on the agenda tonight. I'd also like to thank the town staff for its hard work to move the needle forward on this project. This is a very exciting day for us. It's an exciting day for us and more importantly, for the thousands of Athertonians who last November accepted the special proposal which we have offered. That was 75 percent of the town, 75 percent of the towns behind this project. Indeed, along with my good friend Mike Gardner and our talented team of architects who are here tonight, I stand before you not only on behalf of Menlo Atherton Little League, but on behalf of the people of Atherton who are anxious and deserve to see action on Measure M. After years of bouncing back and forth between Parks and Rec, the Planning Commission and the council, meetings with town staff, and a months-long public campaign to inform the people of Atherton on the scope of the proposal in advance of the Measure Info at last November, we are very hopeful that the ultimate green light for this project, the blessing of the council, will be given in September 2013. We hope and expect that within a year of the passing of Measure M, the council will let the voters know loud and clear that the mandate was heard and will be acted upon, and acted upon in a way consistent with what the voters approved. We cannot wait any longer to begin fulfilling our promise to make Holbrook Palmer Park safer, more beautiful, for the children and families of Atherton to enjoy for many years to come. It's time to get this done. It's been quite a journey to get to September 2013. For years, representatives of Atherton's Little League have been requesting permission to improve the baseball field and surrounding areas at HP, facing a lot of red tape, political roadblocks, and other challenges unforeseen. Last year, in July 2012, the long road reached an important turning point. At that time, we were facing yet another trip back to the Planning Commission when this council asked if we would be willing to take the project to the people for a vote in November. I was at that meeting, and I personally responded to that question on behalf of the Little League. Without hesitation, I said that we would welcome the opportunity to present the issue to the voters because it is the town's park. We also welcomed the vote because we believed that it would help bring finality to a seemingly never-ending process. At the end of the day, we just needed an up or down vote so that the unpaid volunteers like me who are driving the project could move on with their lives. And in part because this council specifically declined to make Measure M an advisory vote, we understood that Measure M would be the up or down vote we were looking for. And that was not just our understanding. Even the opposition to Measure M in the ballot acknowledged on the record that it was an up or down vote. Of course, we knew that if Measure M passed, our proposal would, quote, "still have to go through the normal town land use review process." While we understand that a normal land use process should involve evaluation of whether existing zoning and code requirements would be followed, the process should not exceed that scope. To be sure, the post-election process should not go beyond evaluation of compliance with existing written regulations, the governing documents, as the city attorney called them, or, I'm sorry, the staff called them. Nor should it allow replacement of the majority view on the proposal with individual opinions of folks on the Planning Commission or opponents of Measure M. We do not believe that was permitted by this council or by the language of Measure M. There is no reasonable interpretation of Measure M which would allow for the project to be chipped away piece by piece through post-election negotiations or unilateral decisions outside of a normal land use process. Subject to the confines of the law, we all have an obligation to give the voters what they are expecting. At the time this council chose to let the voters decide the fate of our proposed improvements to HP, Mayor Lewis made it abundantly clear that it was our responsibility to take Measure M to the people. We were charged with getting the word out to let them know, for better or for worse, what we want to do. I looked you in the eye, and I promised that we would. And we did. We worked hard. We built a website and circulated it through the community. We found supporters and published a list of names. We made nice signs and posted them all over town. We held a well-attended event at the park where hundreds of residents took the opportunity to view and ask questions about the plans. And we even filmed a webisode which was accessible to all Athertonians prior to and on Election Day. We are fortunate to live in a community full of bright, informed citizens. When an issue is presented to them for a vote, they pay attention. They certainly paid attention to us. We had thousands of hits on the website where the detailed plans were reviewed. Hundreds of people came out and looked at the plans when they were on display. Hundreds more asked questions. The voters were very well-informed even before their ballots arrived. And then there was the ballot itself. Although there are strict word limits, and therefore it's impossible to describe a project like this in explicit detail within the four corners of the ballot, the statements in support of and in opposition to the proposal painted a very good picture. And you can bet your bottom dollar that the citizens read that ballot. They read the measure. They read the impartial analysis. They read the statements for and the statements against. The 75 percent of voters who approved Measure M were informed when they cast their ballots. Based on the information they were provided, this is what the people of Atherton are expecting from us relative to the Holbrook Palmer baseball field and surrounding area. A new covered seating structure to accommodate 100 people at 36 inches per person. New covered dugouts. A new backstop and new fencing down the baselines. A removable outfield fence. Renovation of the field to make it safer. Construction of an electronic scoreboard. Permanent foul poles. New restrooms. Resurfaced tennis courts. And new trees and landscaping. Each and every one of these items was made abundantly clear before Measure M passed, not only via the campaign materials, but also in the ballot itself. This is what was proposed to the voters. This is what the voters accepted. And this is what the voters are expecting. Now, I'm not an election lawyer, but my instincts tell me that chipping away at what was approved and delivering something less, even though the current proposal adheres to all zoning and code requirements, could create legal exposure. Worse yet, it would send a message to the voting population that the opinions of a small number of individuals can supersede the mandate of 75 percent of Atherton citizens. We cannot change what the voters approved. That said, we are and will be flexible where we can be without compromising the will of the voters. We worked diligently with the town staff and at the Planning Commission phase to identify areas where concerns can be allayed. As you can see in the document with the Planning Commission recommendations and our responses, we've compromised on a number of points already. But we have done so only where we believe we can ease individual concerns without stepping on the toes of the most important stakeholder in this project, the voters of Atherton. Once more, we are excited to be here tonight, and we are excited to get this done once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, it's my understanding what our job tonight as council members is to review the information that has been given to us in the report and presentations, to discuss the applicant's proposal, discuss Planning Commission's comments, and give direction to staff about terms and details of the facility use agreement. And then bring all of that back to council for a vote on the matter at the September 18th meeting, 16th meeting.
September 18th. And before you move on to do that, we also have a representative from the Planning Commission here who has that, Planning Commission report as the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You might want to provide them as well.
And then, right, right, right. So I just wanted to kind of set the stage there before opening it up to, as we typically do, to make a technical question or comment. Okay? So, thank you.
Okay. And I just want you to know that we have our architect here as well if you have any questions for him.
We may have to ask. So, planning, well, we're going to have Planning Commission give his presentation.
I'll go ask Mike.
We'll do it in a minute. So, I'm sorry. Yes. That was not on my radar. So, yeah. Pam?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Herman Christensen, 217 Park Lane. I serve as chairman of the Planning Commission and am authorized by the commission to speak for Ms. Matt. We have submitted our report to you, where our recommendations have been discussed are in this report. We were assigned this task of making recommendations on the fiscal improvements proposed by the Little League more than two years ago. In fact, at the same meeting that Little League first made its proposal. We have held three major hearings. One was before the election, and two afterwards. At each hearing, we have studied the plans, discussed them basically with representatives of Little League, and there's no doubt that we disagree with Mr., with Mike Haven. Our conclusions, as the Public Works Director has pointed out, are in general, and we believe the fiscal improvements are much too monumental, too large in scale, and counter to maintaining the rustic nature of the park. The staff report bases its affirmation on each part of the ruling proposal, on the approved ballot measures, together with the arguments contained in the voter handbook. We base our recommendations solely on the language of the ballot measure itself. I understand that the making the arguments a binding in an election of this sort has a mixed record. And certainly, I would have to say, and I'm sure others in the town, who voted for this ball field and improvement, voted on the basis that we needed an improved ball diamond. But we certainly did not recognize that the arguments would be binding. Our recommendations differ with those of staff before matters. Size of the stadium, the permanence of fencing on the sidelines beyond first and third base, the permanent foul poles, and the permanent scoreboards. And we believe it's important to return the field as much as possible to its park-like setting in the off-season, which of course is the majority of the year, and allow people to enjoy the area as much as possible, and allow other teams such as lacrosse, soccer to use the fields. After all, in the same election that the ballpark was approved, signs against the library appeared stating "save the park." By accepting our recommendations, the park can be saved along with getting an approved ball diamond. I have to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Again, I just want to kind of set the expectations of what council's job here tonight is. There's not going to be a vote to approve or disapprove at this point. That will happen in September 18th meeting. Our job here tonight is to receive this information. This is the first time that council has received this information formally. We heard a presentation from Little League back in the fall of 2011, but then it went to public. So, at this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. So, if any member of the public would like to make a comment, let me know.
My name is Wolfers Leef. I live at Kettle Pad Drive, Madam Mayor and with council members. The staff report raises two significant issues. Most important is how the recommendations of the town's Planning Commission are handled, and two, has the staff incorrectly used the ballot's approval. Short shrift is given to the measured and prudent recommendation of our Planning Commission. The historic role of the Planning Commission is downgraded. When the council added Measure M to the ballot last year, the Planning Commission was in the process of addressing the Little League's proposal. There was nothing in the ballot language which could, would remove the proposal from the commission's purview. The city attorney noted in his analysis on August 14th, "The improvement proposal will still have to go through the normal town land use review process." However, after hearings and the commission's submission of recommendations, the staff completely ignored the commission's report. The staff failed to respond to the commission's views as set out in Attachment E. Prudent suggestions such as number one, seating structure, and number four, outfield fence, are ignored in the staff report. There is no discussion of why the commission's recommendations are ignored in favor of the Little League's views. The council should return the staff report with a request that their acceptance of almost all the Little League's proposal be analyzed in light of the recommendations made by the Planning Commission. The second issue relates to the staff's incorrect use of the ballot's result. The measure was on the ballot to see if there were enough residents who would be open to using the Holbrook Palmer site and not hold it sacrosanct. The measure is drafted in very general terms. The terms like "covered seating" remain undefined, clearly meaning to have substantial fact-finding and analysis before proceeding. The staff's report fails to do any of that. The vote determined that the planning process could proceed, not that the Menlo Park Little League should be allowed to do whatever they proposed. Page three of the staff's report quotes from the ballot measure. Then it illogically uses the Menlo Atherton Little League project proposal, which was sought and submitted in January 2013, after the residents' vote, as the basis for the staff's recommendation. Clearly, the cart has been put before the horse. The staff report is a shallow effort just to move things along. There has been no analysis of the number of spectators who attend games at Holbrook Palmer, nor of other Little League ballparks on the peninsula. Just because parents of Little Leagueers in Menlo Park and Atherton are willing to put up money to build a monument should not be the basis of the staff's recommendation. The staff does not seem to have sought other views and has ignored what has historically been an excellent counter to ill-advised but strongly argued developmental projects. An example of this was the proposal to locate a large swimming pool in the park several years ago. In conclusion, the council needs to allow the commission more sway in the deliberations. They represent local views and not leave it to staff, who has rarely lived in the community and certainly do not suffer the consequences of their recommendation. The report should be returned and direction given to work much more closely with the Planning Commission. Thank you for your attention. I would also add, I voted yes on Measure M. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other member of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Yes.
First, I need to ask the city attorney if I'm legally permitted to speak my personal opinions.
Sure.
Thank you. The Park and Rec Commission was asked to comment on this plan, and they prepared their comments and passed them on to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has made their recommendations. The spirit of their recommendations were to make this proposal more compatible with the natural setting of the park, period. These recommendations are an offer to compromise where all parties are not completely happy with, but respectful of everyone's interests in this concern. I urge that you consider a compromise rather than a black or white answer. I think it is going to be the best for everyone. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Any other member of the public at this time? Okay. Saying no, call, bring, oh, yes, there's one more. Sure.
Alicia Sebo, Lindenwood. I completely agree with Wally and our last speaker. This is a monumental, monument that Little League is going to build. We have a small park donated by some very generous people, and it's for everyone's use, for the little kittens, for all the AYSO teams that were out there. As I drove over here, the field was covered with AYSO, young children kicking balls around. Okay? Once our park, our small park, is fenced in, has huge seating, it's a baseball park. And it's, it's different. It's not a country casual, let's get some sandwiches and go have a picnic with your rancher. And I have watched Little League. These kids are amazingly skilled. I mean, they get those balls so fast. I certainly could never go walking around the perimeter during a game and hope that I'm able to get home. I would never catch up with those balls. So, I think we should use a little sense, cut things down. If you want to go over to Menlo Park, you can see what a full-scale Little League park looks like. Just the fencing and the backstop is amazing. And you don't walk around the side while those kids are playing. They're really skilled. So, thank you. And I hope we cooperate. We want our skills, our kids to be athletic, but let's use some sense and have them play AYSO soccer and other things too. Thanks.
Any other member of the public? Okay. So, I'll bring you back to council. Councilmember Wally, you have questions?
I have quite a few questions.
Okay.
The first thing is, the only hard stuff, despite what Mike says, the only hard stuff in this ballot measure is very simple. It says, "Shut the town permit for Menlo Atherton Little League to improve the baseball field and surrounding areas at Holbrook Palmer Park, including cover seating for spectators, and improved playing area for children, and new restroom for all park users using private funds only." And I, like many of the 75 percent of people, completely support it. But that's the only hard stuff. Interesting, I called three residents, three people who live in Atherton, and I said, "Did you vote for this?" They said, "Yes, we did." "Did you read the pros and cons or listen to any of the baseball stuff?" "Absolutely not." So, why did you vote for it? They said, "Because, bottom line, we really wanted to improve the field." They said, "The field, who has been maintained by the baseball people, is in terrible shape, and the main thing we want to do is to improve the field." So, the only hard stuff we've got at the moment is what was on the ballot measure. I don't care what Mike says about all these other things that happened. People vote on the ballot measure. They don't vote with pros, cons, or attorneys, letters, or anything else. So, that's my first point. Second thing is, the staff has handled this totally wrongly. The starting point for all of this discussion should have been what the Planning Commission recommended. That was the starting point. The Planning Commissioners are all residents. Many of them have lived in this town for many, many years. They're the people we should be taking notice of. None of the staff live here. Even our city manager doesn't live here. So, to me, you start off with what the Planning Commission says, and then you go with any negotiations from there. Now, to me, we haven't done that, and I think we have to start again and start with the Planning Commission recommendations. Now, I have quite a few other things. And we had this staff evaluation of these differences. It was based upon our view and interpretation of the passage of Measure M. Who are the staff to interpret Measure M? They're not, they're, I mean, I can interpret Measure M. A hundred other people can interpret Measure M. We all come up with a different interpretation. It's not hard. The hard stuff is what's on the ballot. I'm going to go into some of the details now as well. It says, "And we are to be responsible for the maintenance, repair, and replacement of the baseball field including seating there." First of all, I don't disagree with that. Seems to me that we should be responsible for all of the repair and replacement of baseball field. Menlo Atherton should be paying us to do it. We're the people that are responsible for that. Then we go to the staff recommendation. That one, I guess I'm okay with that one. So then, "An environmental impact was prepared for the Atherton Library Project in 2012," etcetera, analyzing, and I don't know why the Atherton Library Project's got anything to do with it. And, you know, it's really interesting that they asked for seating for 200 people. Well, if they ask for seating for 200 people, that's going to make a huge difference to the party. Huge. However, my grandson was in Little League for many, many years. I went to dozens of his games. You know what? In these games, I don't think I ever saw more than 50 people, and most of the time it was 20 people. So, why we need 200 people there, I don't know. I mean, if you, you know, I went to baseball fields all over this area with them, and I can't remember any game where we ever had more than 50 spectators. So, it seems to me that 60 to 100 people is more than enough to accommodate all the spectators. And secondly, you don't need 36 inches for the seating. 24 inches is far bigger seating than we're in at the moment. 24 inches is more than adequate for the seating. So, it seems to me that the foul poles should be removed at the end of the season upon request of the town. That just makes sense to me. I don't care if they're tall or not, they have to be removed. They need to be removed. I think we've agreed that the dugouts with the roof covered, that's probably, I would agree to that. And also, when we get to the fencing, seems to me that permanent fencing should stop at the ballpark. We don't need permanent fencing. The fencing from the ballpark, all around that should be removable. I'd agree to permanent fencing to the ballpark. The lighting should be minimal, downlit security lamps. I don't know if that's been covered by the baseball people or not. But anyway, definitely has to be downlit.
So, Councilmember Donnie, I don't want to stop you or anything or interrupt you, but I am, sorry. But, you know, you're getting to this chart.
All right. I'll wait, I'll wait.
And so, I think that we can put this chart up on the overhead.
That's fine.
So, everyone can see it because it looks to me, if we can just kind of summarize, there are three areas that are not, that are still controversial, items one, two, and three. All the rest have been pretty much
Dealt with.
Dealt with. And if we could just, in the essence of time, kind of deal with those three, I think it'll cover the things that you're talking about, and then we can share with everyone else. Does that make sense?
All right. I have a couple.
Do you have a?
I have a couple.
Aside from these three?
Yeah, yeah.
Aside from these three?
Yeah, yeah, and not even on these three.
Not even on these. Well, can we deal with these three first?
Well, I think we would talk about the staff report and ask some questions, and then there may need to be something here, and then we can add these other three, but...
But if we, if we deal with these three issues that are in this grid first and kind of discuss how we feel about, then we can go, go, okay? Because I have issues, discussions also about the maintenance, length of term, things like that, and the facilities agreement, but...
Well, I've got other ones that aren't even being asked for, but the staff.
Okay.
The staff asked for inputs on all those, but I've got a couple on that, if I could, please.
Can we just go ahead and do this first?
My suggestion is I would let Councilmember Wimmer deal with those first before we go to this decision. Yeah.
Yeah, so, um...
Go ahead. I'll be over.
Okay. I appreciate your input. So, so, in one case here, I noticed the, and I spoke with the city manager and said, "Bill, you might want to weigh in." I did...
City attorney?
Yeah. I spoke with the city manager and said, "Perhaps Bill might want to weigh in."
I'm sorry.
It is the question of the construction project, and I realize it's MALL's responsibility. They're funding it. They're going to draw up and approve the plans and things like that with regards to what we say. But the construction project is in, is in the park, and, you know, and things happen sometimes around construction projects. And so, I guess I was wondering, really, there would be liability to the town if somebody, say, wandered into a construction site and got hurt, and both Little League, the, the construction facility, as well as the town of Atherton, would be, could be held accountable in a lawsuit. And while we're going to require insurance and things like that, once the insurance is paid, then the deep pockets of, in some sort of order of precedence, begin to take over. And I guess my, my concern is, is that, just like with the library, I would think that the construction should be, you know, with the, with the board or the steering committee of the MALL, but we should have a project manager, and we, it might be worthwhile for us, since we're going to have some deep pockets in this, to, to be participative in this construction project, and, because I don't see that, that we would be fully protected, or is there a way, Bill, that we could be fully protected?
Yeah. Councilmembers, a liability exposure turns out to be, in this case, probably pretty minimal. It's like almost infinite testament for several reasons. Number one, they're going to have to hold harmless, indemnify, and insure us. Secondly, ABAG insures us for liability. So, our pockets may seem deep, but they aren't really as deep as they may seem, because the insurance, the insurance coverage is, is quite extensive, and, and ABAG does a phenomenal job of protecting its agency cities. So, while I understand what you're saying, they're going to have to fence it the same way as anybody else during construction periods. They're going, and, you know, the police department does patrol it, unlike everybody else's construction sites. And so, I think that, well, there's always liability, and we get sued almost any time. I mean, somebody gets hit on El Camino, it's not even our property, and we still get sued. But the bottom line is, I think that safeguards that usually protect us are there pretty seriously.
So, in summary, then, I guess the proposal that Little League would be responsible for the construction then doesn't give you any concern? And you feel that's a common practice or a practice that we should engage in?
Yes, it's quite common. It's often, mainly, there's, there's private construction on public lands all the time, federal, state, and local. It's often, there's joint projects, but it's, it's pretty common, and it's not something that I think is...
Okay. All right, thank you.
I ask you a question, you know?
Absolutely.
Suppose this is built by Little League, and suppose something terrible happens. It falls down, kills four or five of the kids there, and it's decided that the reason that that accident took place was because the construction was faulty. Are we still off the hook?
Yeah, if you think about it, our construction inspectors are going to be inspecting it. Secondly, they still are going to have to indemnify and hold it harmless for the use of the facility, and the actual structure itself, before it's finalized, will be inspected by the city's inspectors, and ABAG's insurance is still going to cover it as being a facility on our part.
So, what's the limitation?
Millions.
I mean, suppose, suppose that this thing fell and killed a few Little Leaguers. I mean, we're talking about millions as far as...
Possibly, sure.
So, it goes up to, what, ten million?
They have insurance, and then they have reinsurance, so that there's limits on, I mean, it, I don't anticipate this as being a problem. And then, one of the things that is an extra, a bonus for us, is when this facility, or any other facility that's constructed by the town, is completed, ABAG comes and inspects it. They have their own insurance analysts that look at these things to make sure, well, number one, make sure that they think it's safe, and number two, to make sure that the premium that we're paying looks at all of the facilities that could cause liability.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bill. That was the measure?
Oh, okay.
The rest of them were the most part wrong?
Okay. So, if, in the agenda page, under Exhibit F, Attachment F, this is the review of the planning commission's recommendations as spread across the information contained in the application. This is, column one would be the application, scope, planning commission's recommendations. Consistency, I am saying that was, that is staff's, staff's comments as whether it's consistent with the ballot measure?
Yes, that's staff's interpretation of the ballot measure.
And then, the, the next column is feedback from the Menlo Atherton Little League to the planning commission's recommendation, and then the far right-hand column is what council needs to wrestle with, and it either says that we need to affirm, and if you, as you will see in the further pages, there says there's no issue. So, on this first page, there are two issues that are in, in discussion, and wanted to make sure that everybody's on the same page here. The application says that the seating structure is proposed to be approximately one thousand one hundred and twenty square feet in area, with a roof height of fifteen feet, with a two-foot-tall decorative cupola. The structure, the structure is designed with a horizontal wood siding, decorative lattice, and handrails, and composition shingled roof. My question when reading that, and I think I may have read something else, that, that the objective is to make it look old-fashioned, not...